Okay. It's called meeting, the order at 7:05, the regular meeting of the zoning commissioner for the town of Simsbury. Apologize for a little bit late start to design review, just a few minutes over. First order of business is to appoint alternates, and I'll appoint Ned Cosgrove tonight for Kevin Gray. The rest of the...Ned for Kevin Gray. Okay? The others, regular members, are here. We'd also like to welcome Jackie Battos, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. New alternate zoning commissioner. Welcome. All right. First order of business would be approval of the minutes of the July 21 meeting. It was a long meeting, so there were lots of pages of minutes, but I got through it and thought it was fairly accurately just described what happened. Any comments from anybody? David? I know you go through and... Okay, so I will move and will approve the minutes of July 21 as submitted. Next up is the public hearing. Do you want to read the call for me?
Sure.
Derek?
Thank you. Zoning commission of the town of Simsbury will hold a public hearing at a regular meeting to be held on Monday, September 15, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room at the Simsbury Town Office's 933 Hot Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, on the following: A, application number 14-38 of Mark Lubetkin, owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor permit for a series of three special courtyard events at Redstone Pub on the property located at 10 Jim Gallagher Way, map G10, block 227, lot 001A-RR, Zone SC3. B, application number 1439 of Joseph A. Galliet, owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 8, Section C dot 1 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for a home occupation in a residential zone on the property located at 283 Hot Meadow Street, Weetog, map F15, block 116, lot 005, Zone R40. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard and written communications will be received. Sign, Rob Pomeroy, Chairman.
Thank you, Derek. Hyrum, would you like to speak on Mr. Lubetkin's hat?
At this point in time, the file does not have a copy of the affidavit that's required for the posting of the sign, the signature of the owner on the actual application. Maybe Mr. Lubetkin can comment on that. And the last time, in order to avoid any problem with the activities that take place in the courtyard, there was lots of discussion between other tenants. And I just want to make sure that those questions are addressed by the applicant this evening. So, those are my only comments. The rest of it, you have a staff report on the rest of dates and so on.
Is Mr. Lubetkin here? Oh, yeah, Mark, I'm sorry. Let's see.
Hello, everyone. Stand here because you're recording, right?
Right.
Hi, Mark Lubetkin, Redstone Pub, and the representative for the landlord. I have my official stamped notary paper. I wanted a hand with witnesses, so we make sure it doesn't get out of this place. I'm not sure what you mean about a signature on the application. I signed it when I filled it out with your admin, a very nice lady who does a good job in the office. We're looking to do three events over the next 12 months. We're going to do an Oktoberfest on October 11th that will feature German beers, October beers like the pumpkins, and some German foods, and take up the entire courtyard space like we've done the last two and a half years, three years. We're going to do a November 29th, right after Thanksgiving, in sequence with the Simsbury celebrates, like we've done three years now. This will be our fourth year doing it. And we want to try for the first time a spring fling, same kind of thing on May 2nd. It would be 3 or 4 o'clock until 10 to midnight area, depending upon the weather. We will use the entire day for setup and breakdown. Our breakdown actually finishes around 2:00 in the morning. We have gotten approvals from the fire marshal and health department, and waiting on zoning. We need to go through liquor commission still. Obviously, we need your signature to do that. It's a good event. It's a fun event. It's been successful in the past for the community. We do have consensus from all the current residents of the courtyard building to the landlord that this is an acceptable proposition. It's on days when they're all dark. In other words, their businesses are shuttered for this Saturday, these Saturdays. They're all Saturdays, by the way. Pretty straightforward and simple request.
So, just a couple of questions, and I'll echo what Hyrum said. Last year, I do remember there were some issues relative to the other tenants in the courtyard. And so, one of those tenants is gone, I guess, that...
Yes, sir. The one that had the issue.
Yeah. So, that, hopefully, everybody else is on board. I think if we're going to approve this, we should have official start and stop times, and there should be official, you know, be out of the outside. What are your normal hours on a Saturday night?
Saturdays, in the summer, noon till whenever, usually 2:00 is the limit per liquor commission and the town's approval from our original liquor license. Because the courtyard event is later in the afternoon, we want to do 3 or 4 o'clock. 4:00 for the Oktoberfest, probably 4:00 for the September...
I'm more interested in the end time than the start time, so...
2:00 would be the latest possible for breakdown. The event itself would be over by 10:00 to midnight. Simsbury tends to roll sidewalks around 10:00, so it slows down and dies out around that time.
All right. Any other questions from Mark, from the commissioner? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this topic? Pro or con?
One of the dates is wrong on the staff report, but it's right on the application for two...
Jackie contributing right out of the chute. That's what I like to see. All right, so let's sync up the dates. What are the...
Which are the correct dates?
Last date for May 2nd.
May 2nd, Saturday.
It's 2014. It should be 2015. It's right on the application.
Okay.
It's tough, as busy as they are right now, to keep on top of everything.
Just a question on the likelihood of this happening is probably very small, but what happens if one of the other parts of the building gets rented out to somebody who does need to utilize the parking lot on a Saturday? Your last one is in May. A lot can happen.
Yes, it can, actually.
So, how does that get handled?
That's a good question. Haven't approached it. I'm actively trying to rent those spaces for the landlord right now, and if you'd like a flyer on it, I'd be happy to provide it.
I already have open space to rent, so you're my competition.
The lease has been written, rewritten, for the new tenants to include the understanding that there can be up to six courtyard events for the Redstone Pub. It was redone by my attorney, and the landlord has accepted it. So, all future tenants, and all the current tenants are month by month. So, we've foreseen that challenge and have addressed it internally. Good question.
Okay, so I need...Any other questions from the audience or the commission? All right, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
Second by Derek. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the second is application 1439 for Joseph Galliet. Mr. Galliet here. Please come and use the microphone. These are recorded. Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm been a hairdresser for a number of years, worked in Avon for a number of years. Right now, I'm in Canton, and recently, I underwent lung surgery in February, and I've slowed down quite a bit. So, I want to take my business home, and it's a nominal business at this point, nothing like it used to be. And I can't see paying a high rent for something that I'm going to be doing without, you know, a large income. So, what I'm proposing to do is to turn a space in my house into a studio. I also have a photography interest, and that photography includes photo art more than photography, which means I manipulate the photographs. So, most of the stuff I do is on computer. I will take pictures, obviously, portraits, but they're manipulated. So, a lot of the activity is on location and not there. I'll go out to different sites to make the pictures, and then I come home and do them in the computer. And both of those have been very good to me. They're a high interest for me, and I'm just proposing to be able to do that at home without changing much of anything in the neighborhood. And if you have questions for me, I'd gladly answer them, but I think that that's...
What would you expect in a normal week, number of visitors to your house?
That's a good question, because right now, I'm working two days a week, and I'm doing four to five people a day. And they're spread. You're going to probably ask me about hours. And there's...I have people that come in the morning, and I have people that come after work. So, my proposal is to be open at 9:00 and really go to maybe 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night. But I'm doing one person at a time. That's all the traffic you're going to see. I have adequate parking for about four cars on my site, and I can turn them around so they don't have to go out backwards, which I don't let anyone do. So, actually, I have a driveway that's adjacent to my neighbor who's here in support of this. This is Jane Christians, and she would probably be the one affected most by any of the activity, and she's in support of it. So, if anyone has opposition or questions, I would love to answer them. If not, I would love to have a yay.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah. So, you answered my next question already about the parking. Any other questions from the commission?
As a special exception, will this stay with the property for future people to buy it?
Yes.
Should the commission decide to put particular limits on it with regard to hours or number of visitors or whatever, that would stick with the deal? So, they couldn't change substantially or appreciably, you know, with a new, under a new order, just because of the special exception grant?
Any other...Anyone here in the audience would like to speak? Or, yes? All right. We did have one issue as it related to the size of the sign.
Oh, yeah. I had a question on that myself. I thought there was a...If we wanted it bigger than that, there would be an extra charge, and I think I did that.
It isn't an extra charge so much as that this commission doesn't even have the authority to grant a larger sign other than the square foot sign. So, my suggestion is that if the commission approves it, and one square foot will get you started for now, you can seek a variance later on from the ZBA at some point in time if you want to do that.
Okay. Sure.
I did this math in my head, but it's eight inches by 18 inches is a square foot, right?
Oh, cool. Because I do need it wider than...
Right.
Than squarer. That's all right. That's fine.
Okay. Anybody check my math?
283, oh, it's one and a half. We got it.
And the name of the operation will be Studio 283, which is just my address, so it won't be a abusive sign, obtrusive sign.
Is here the last house before Weetog Park?
No, it's in the middle. It's in the middle between the three. I'm in the middle. I'm right across from the linen house that...Actually, she's directly across from the linen house, and I'm one closer to the park. So, there's three houses there, and I'm in the middle.
But there's a street there, and then you're around three houses, and then the park is...
The street is Pheasant Lane.
I'm on the corner.
She's on the corner of Pheasant Lane. So, coming from Simsbury, going towards Avon, on the right, you have Pheasant Lane, her house, my house, the next house, and then the park. Oops, sorry. Okay.
All right, great. Need a motion to close the hearing? Second?
Second.
Second, Dave Ryan. All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Hyrum, we can vote on these two? Public? Okay. So, discussion of possible action on any agenda items. I would say the first up, we should do the public hearing, or vote on application 1438 of Mark Lubetkin, owner, as we just heard.
We will accept the application 1438 of Mark Lubetkin.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous? All right, and the next application is 14-39 of Joseph A. Galliet. Looking for a motion?
Can I ask Hyrum a question?
Sure.
So, it runs with the property?
Correct.
So, if somebody bought the house, and they wanted it, it'd have to actually come in to us and have it rezoned 100% residential? How would that work?
If it were going to be the same thing, and somebody wanted to do that there, there would be no requirement that they come in.
Right.
If they wanted to remove the special permit?
Yeah.
They could void that. I suspect by filing on the records, then they...
Almost like a quit came claim, you mean, sort of thing?
They would just come in and file a notice that they wanted to void it for some reason if they wanted to.
But if they wanted to have more parking spaces, they would have to come in.
Right.
Subtractions are not a problem. Additions are issues.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion? I can't remember.
Yeah.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I don't have a motion.
It was moved by Ned and seconded by Dave, right? No? That was the closing hearing. I'm sorry. They moved it and seconded it. The actual application?
Yeah. You moved this one. Yeah. Jerry Post moved it.
Okay, so I get what we need is a second one?
Jerry Post moved it. David Ryan seconded it, and we're about to vote again. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Derrick is nay. So, 5 to 1. All right. So, it's approved. You allow. All right. Okay. Next item is application 1430, and I think we will take these together of Joseph J. Smith, Esquire applicant, Thomas Evans owner, petitioning for a text amendment regarding changes to Article 10, Sections G1 and G2 of the zoning regulations of the town of Simsbury, and application 14-31 of Christopher J. Smith, Esquire applicant, Thomas Evans owner, for site plan amendment and zone change for Zone I-1 to Zone PAD on the property located at 155 Hot Meadow Street, map F17, block 201, lot 002A, zoned I-1. Hyrum?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to help facilitate the discussion in any way that you would like me to do that. What I did prepare are two motions for the commission's consideration this evening. One motion for approval of the application, another motion for denial of the application. Depending upon how your discussion goes, you consider either one of them, but I'm happy to answer any factual questions that you might have at the same time. So, with your permission, I'll pass those two out.
Please. So, I'll kick this off by saying, we all recognize there's been a great deal of conversation about this and a lot of information shared with everybody. Really appreciate the public's involvement through the public hearing process. But now, it's up for the commission to discuss the aspects of this and vote on the applications. I would suggest that we take the text amendments first and discuss them, and then vote on them, and then we can discuss further the actual zone change from I-1 to PAD. During this hearing, I believe it was the second time, there was a discussion about the original application for the text language that was fairly broad, about excluding parcels that were PADs, and that I think Mr. Smith had suggested alternative language at the first or second meeting that would restrict that, reduce that to having the text change amendment apply only, the exception to the language about the restriction on car service or repair facilities to churches, schools, or other similar facilities that are inside of a existing industrial zone. And I would say, I think that's a significantly tighter and better application to make than the original application. So, I'd like to suggest that the commissioners talk about that first as the actual proposal on the table.
We have three things here in this memo. Which is the one that...
So, if you look at the...What Hyrum passed out just a minute ago is, on page 2 of 3, regarding the proposed zoning text amendments, and this was language that was actually offered by Mr. Smith, which is to say that the afford...is to insert in the existing regulation the following: "The aforementioned distance requirement shall not apply to a church or religious institution located in an industrial zone." Previously, it had said, "The aforementioned distance requirement shall not apply to a zone that is a PAD." And there was discussion and dialogue about that. So, what...And I'll share with you my thoughts on this. If a church itself elects to locate itself in an industrial zone, the protections that are provided by this regulation seem to be that they're accepting that limitation. So, I think that this actually makes sense. And I don't think it in any way harms any other existing churches in town that...Because I don't think there are any churches, schools, other similar facilities that are in industrial zones.
I agree with that. I move that we accept these two modifications as allowed.
Okay. And I would second that motion. We accept both text amendments. We already had a little discussion about that. The second text amendment has to do with the size of the curb cut, and it seemed, I think the testimony at the hearing was that this, the existing regulations are unsafe, basically, as outlined in terms of the tightness of the turns and the sightlines in and out of the property. So, I agree. I agree with you that both of these amendments would be appropriate.
I would just offer this to Mr....just for your consideration. I spoke at length with the town engineer about this as well, because none of us certainly takes changing any of the regulations lightly. And his feeling was that the regulation didn't need to be changed quite as much as the applicant had suggested. And so, what I suggested is that should you decide you want to do this, that in consultation with the town engineer, that this particular statement, the one that's in bold on page 203, kind of in the middle of the page, should be added rather than the wording that was proposed, is that the above requirements shall be met unless determined otherwise by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, where the requirements for driveway width and curb radii shall prevail when DOT approval for such design is required. And the reason that I said that is that we really didn't want to change the regulation sort of whole hog. We really didn't think it was necessary that every single curb cut be made as wide as it could possibly be. Town engineer feels strongly, as do I, that it doesn't need to be any wider than we're required to. This happens to be, obviously, on a state highway. DOT will ultimately determine what that proper width for safe maneuvering is, but we think that this particular wording provides the town a little bit more security than it would have with the proposed wording, doesn't change them whole hog, and does still leave the power to do that with the DOT. So, that's our suggestion, staff suggestion on that.
So, can you...Let's just walk through that so we understand it. So, rather than the italicized, underlined in two of this page, we would delete, we would leave that out, because it's not in there now.
Correct.
We would instead add the bolded black in the middle. Is that what you're suggesting?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. There's one other line that's in the current regulation, which frankly, when I talked to town engineer, didn't make any sense to him either, and that is the wording that says there shall be a minimum of any series of driveways. And frankly, that didn't really make a lot of sense to either one of us, so we're recommending this for cleanup sake at this time, too, that that be deleted as well. It has no effect whatsoever in this application, one way or the other.
So, we're keeping the regulation the way it is, except if the DOT on the state highway approves something different from that.
Correct.
Okay. That's... And we believe that this will allow the applicant to build the driveway that's both safe and satisfactory to the DOT without permanently changing our regulation.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the table. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I've always had a problem with churches dropping into a neighborhood, buying a piece of property, put up a church, and it changes all the regulations in the rest of the neighborhood. And I...So, I think as far as the industrial thing, this is a good idea to change the regulations to reflect that. But I've seen residential neighborhoods where, or partially residential neighborhoods, where you pop a church down, and then all of a sudden, people have problems with existing commercial property.
I think I have to modify my motion.
Okay.
To add, to change it so that the, on Article 10, Section G, the change will be to add the bold statement here, which is the above requirement shall be met unless otherwise determined, unless determined otherwise by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, where requirements for driveway width and curb radii shall prevail when DOT approval for such designs is required.
And I will second the revised motion. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. So, that brings us to the second application, which is proposed zone change from I-1 to PAD. And I just wanted to read through for the record what Hyrum has shared with us, and I concur. The applicant has made the application for zone change to the subject 1.87 acre site. There was a question raised at the public hearing, but the town attorney has confirmed that the eligibility for this, of the subject site for consideration of a PAD is allowed. There was a discussion of minimal size. The applicant has provided description of the open space and public amenities to be located on the site in a memo by Attorney Smith, including at least specific and safe bicycle and pedestrian access to the abutting trail, construction of a pathway to access the proposed facilities from the trail, three bike storage racks, a shelter for bikers and pedestrians during inclement weather, access to the public restroom facilities for users of the trail. While the site historically has been used for a wide variety of uses, including retail sales, manufacturing, and automotive sales and services, the proposed PAD will allow the use of the site for a new mix of uses, including retail, residential, office, and service station, and the PAD will allow for the renovation of the existing 100-year-old barn on the property. Well, as understand, that a portion of the barn will be removed to make room for the patio construction. The largest part of the barn will be renovated and upgraded. So, I'm just looking for discussion. We don't have a motion yet, but...
Those are all fairly accurate.
I'll start. Just for the record, I wasn't here at this last meeting, but I just wanted to let people know that I watched the full video online, and I was kind of taking notes as I went. But, you know, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, I happen to be on the PAD subcommittee that helped draft PAD, so it's important to me. One of the things that I fought for in the PAD was the flexibility of the PAD, and that was twofold, the flexibility for the owner or developer or both, and the flexibility for the zoning commission as well. Just as a side note, you know, I'm a huge proponent of property rights and landowner rights and the ability to improve your property and your land. But when I contemplated the PAD, I liked, you know, the idea of being able to develop mixed use in Simsbury. mixed use in Simsbury. And then I went further and thought, well, we did, I'd love to be able to, you know, say we could build residential in the downtown. And I thought, back then, that was, that the PAD was going to allow for that. And what ended up happening was we had a townwide charrette and a town center code that we can adapt to the town center that allows that type of mixed use. You know, so although I don't love the idea of a text amendment and making special exceptions on this property, over the last five or six years, you know, our zoning regulations have gone through a major transformation. So when you talk about as of right, or, you know, spot zoning in this negative light, the reality is, is that zoning regs and trends and, you know, whether it be mixed use, which was never even contemplated in our old Euclidean zoning regs, it's part of what's making towns like Simsbury viable. So I think they're very important. So we're going, we're in a slow transition. You know, it's determined by market demand fluctuations and importantly townspeople, town people's views as what, as to what the town should look like. So I talked about the charrette. My hangup is the mix of uses. The idea of mixed use in my mind is more new, new urbanist in, in nature, where there are synergies are in place. In my mind, there are no synergies here. I like the idea of residential and retail, but turning a gas station into a bike depot is just smoke and mirrors. Pedestrian, pedestrian-oriented places, less parking, more walkability. A fuel station is counterintuitive to this. It's mean, it's a means to an end. Okay? The only way that this redevelopment works is if the gas station is put there. That's, that's the equity for this whole project. And I think there is a much better use, and I think there is a use, and I think, you know, it should be, it should be easy almost. And I, you know, hey, I'm not, I'm not an architect. I'm not a, you know, but I do know real estate. I do know mixed use. It's my business. So, you know, I think it would be difficult to, to lease the residence as well with a 24-hour Cumberland Farms next door, excuse me. Further, Simsbury, Simsbury is not a 24/7 community. So in my mind, it's a misuse of the PAD. Having said that, if there's, you know, a use to be had as of right, and that includes the auto mechanic store, then, you know, again, to certain, what I would call special interest groups in town, you got to be careful what you wish for. There's a good use for this property, this just isn't it.
That's my notes. Thank you. Dave?
I have some comments about it. I think the key factor to me in a path for any development is whether or not it will improve the quality of life in town. And the aspects of this that add to quality of life are a great physical improvement of the site. I was down there today, walked around. The pool barn is starting to degenerate. You look at things that need to be repaired. Site itself has got weeds growing all over it. It's been like that for some time. And I think to get a, an investment made there is, is an important thing. I think the convenience store and bathrooms adjacent to the trail are very important. It's a different aspect of it than we would have thought when we were talking about PADs in the beginning. But I walked across to the trail, and we have more people walking on that trail than we do on our sidewalks downtown. At 11:30 this morning, there were three or four people walking up and down there and bicycles going by. And I think having a convenience store there is, is a great idea, and a bathroom. Think increasing competition for gasoline supply is good from my standpoint. The offices in some residential fits with the hotmeadow traffic levels. If you go to that property and walk out on Hot Meadow Street, it's a busy, commercial street. And I think there's nothing wrong with having a Cumberland Farms there in that respect. The ability to walk to the trail and walk on the trail to a convenience store is an interesting thing. There's a, a property, the Canal Place Development of, I think they're mostly condominiums, that are adjacent to that. The people that live there could walk down and, and go to the convenience store without driving. The people down below would have to walk out on the road a little bit to get to the trail. But I think those are, those are interesting aspects that are not what you would have thought the PAD in the beginning, but I think of some value. Concerns of the neighbors were primarily a threat to the aqua for from a gas station. And I understand the concerns, but the inland wetlands agreed, even though they'd like not to agree, that there was no basis for denial. The site itself is not over an aqua protection zone, and the developers agreed to very stringent spillage controls. And therefore, in my mind, the main concern of the neighbors is not real. As far as the synagogue adjacent, we, we've already dealt with that. It's kind of like moving in at the end of the airport runway and wanting to close down the airport. I mean, it's, it's just not something that makes sense. So anyway, my, my feeling is this owner is willing to invest a lot of money in this thing. It needs an investment. It will add to the quality of life, and maybe it's a creative solution using a pad that we wouldn't have envisioned. But we wouldn't let us, we wouldn't let somebody build High Line Tower now either. And so I'm, I'm in favor of it.
The one other comment I would add is, and I don't even know if we brought this up, but whatever happens with the development of the Hartford, it's valuable over there. You have people who are going to need goods and services. They're not going to drive down to Johnny Keys. They're not going to come into the center of the town when they're going, maybe going that way. And people at that end of town are going to want those services as well. If, if we think good things will happen at the Hartford property, there'll be an influx of people that are going to need gas, need services, some might housing as well. So I think it's a benefit for, for that property. Maybe it's an attractive thing for potential buyers as well. I don't know.
There will be amenities in, in the Hartford property most likely as well, and it, in my understanding, it does allow for a fuel station.
Okay.
I, I don't know if I'm right on that.
Awesome. Yeah. Jerry?
I'm more in agreement with Derek. I, you know, I just don't see the gas station being a good fit. I know they cited the P O C D, but I don't think the P O C D's language was for that particular area. I also feel for the people that are living there, you know, I personally wouldn't want a gas station in my backyard. Secondly, you know, I said this at the last meeting, the 24-hour gas station was a deal breaker for me. I can't see a 24-hour gas station being successful as far as business volume, nor what I want to see in somebody's backyard. So I'm not supportive there. Thirdly, the size of the gas station, just the heft of it, is just, it's dominating the whole piece of property. And again, as Derek said, I, you know, I think we did come together with this PAD. I don't think we thought of every single opportunity that could be put together and citing of the gas station at that particular location, I don't think is a good fit. Environmentally, I've been in town all my life, in public safety all my life. There's been two fuel tanker incidents in town over the years. We are close, in close proximity to the waterways and the river there, and I don't think there's enough provisions, when you see a fuel tanker incident, to handle the ramifications of what could happen to the neighbors in this area and, and the Farmington watershed. And that's even cited in the Farmington watershed's report that, you know, while wetlands may have agreed, I more or less side with the watershed council. So personally for me, I don't think it's a good fit.
My, my question, what if, what if something were to be built as of right? I mean, I, I heard, you know, Vaughn say there's a little bit of buyer beware the last time. I mean, I don't know if it's really, you know, relative to this discussion, but I mean, it could be, you know, you know, an oil-changing facility, for example.
Could be a lot worse things going in there.
Yeah. I mean, that's not really, that doesn't really fit the, the neighborhood either.
Right.
I mean, nobody wants that, you know, behind their house. But, you know, that's the diligence we all do when we buy property or invest.
But I think a Jiffy Lube would be very specific hours.
Let's talk about the hours. Yeah, so let's talk about that. I think, I think we have...
The 24 hours, I thought that was to be determined.
Well, there was a comment, if you read the minutes, there was, the gentleman from Cumberland Farms said he wanted to work within the community. And so I, I would propose that we limit the hours if we're going to consider this for the application to, you know, no later than 12 and no earlier than 5:00 in the morning. And that would be consistent with the way the stores that we have, the gas stations we have in town today. So it isn't a 24/7 thing. And we would also restrict, you know, outdoor speakers with, you know, music or playing. I mean, I think we have, we have the ability to do that because of the, you know, strong feelings from the neighbors in, in this particular case. So I would, I would make that suggestion that we modify the proposed...
I believe also other programs we have done, projects, we've done things with lighting.
That was, that's in here as well, Ned.
Where we can instruct the people, if they want the approval, they have to go with the lighting program.
Yeah, so those, so some of those things are in this suggested, uh, clarifications, if you will, to, to an approval we would have, that this is all, what's, what's the form of art for the lights that...
Cut-off, cut-off lighting.
Do you want me to go through those things?
Yeah, let's, would you do that, Hiram? That'd be helpful.
What I was, what I was going to suggest is if the commission did decide to go forward with an approval, is that, that certain things, as chairman said, be considered as modifications to the site plan amendment. And they, there is follows, so just quickly run through them. PAD allows the commission to require timely compliance with the entire plan as shown on the referenced plans. What that means is, and some people had said before that they were concerned that, that portion of this property would get built and the other portion would languish, not get done. And I think that, that can be addressed the following way. Commission could require as part of this approval that the existing barn in the property be renovated within three years of the approval. If failure to complete that significant portion of renovation in that time should cause the commission to review the approval and take appropriate action. Chairman just mentioned the hours that he suggested, and I think that's, in keeping, very close to what the other service stations in town currently do. Another one was that the commission specifically could require that any lighting, any site lighting be full cut-off lighting, which will not trespass off the site. In addition to that, shields might be required, or may be required, once the lighting is installed. If it's found that it trespasses off the property, shields could correct that. The applicant would obviously need to agree to that. The commission should also specifically prohibit any outside noise or speakers which are used for playing music or advertising, or for any purposes other than an emergency or specific instructions relating to the fueling facility. So that if someone comes up and they're handicapped, for example, and they need to push a button to get help to turn the pump on or whatever, that's typical stuff. For an emergency, obviously, you know, put the pump down or whatever. That's obviously important. Whereas perhaps saying that, you know, you can get a coffee for 99 cents and whatever is not. So that's aimed at that kind of, that additional noise. Commission also could hereby approve the location of the proposed fueling facility as required in accordance with Chapter 250 of the Connecticut general statutes. And that's just a requirement that if the commission's acting on the location here, that that's part of, of what you're actually approving. The signs for the proposed development are also important, and they may be approved through the normal approval process. However, the applicant should not have any internally illuminated signs on the site, including fuel price signs permitted, unless permitted by a revision either to the town's signage regulations or by a duly approved variance from the zoning board of appeals. All window signage shall be, meet the existing zoning regulations, and sometimes we see signage that takes up a significant amount of windows and, and convenience stores. And that shouldn't happen on such a highly visible site if the applicant truly does want it to, to appear nice at all times. Prior to the sign-off for any CO, all typical requirements, all the requirements following are to be met. Water pollution control authority, where there was some discussion about the sewer line at one point in time. Fire marshal, obviously very important in this. Town engineer, code enforcement official, and the building official, of course. This is important too. I think the last one that I suggested was that if any use other than what has been proposed and approved, if it gets approved at this time, is proposed to be changed, that the planning director would be notified before any such change is made. And then a determination as to whether such change is substantial, needs to come back to the commission or not, will be made at that time. So that is, the commission gets what it sees on the plan and what's proposed on the plan at this time, rather than some sort of different activity that's proposed at a future, future date and time. So in terms of controlling night, light, noise, and activities at the site, those are the things that I suggested. If you have any others, or if you think that addresses what your concerns are, I'm happy to talk about that.
Just real quick, Hiram, I don't mean to put you on the spot. In terms of like a time period after the fuel station opens, that they have to improve the, the pool barn, you know, after the Cumberland Farms is already in place, what recourse do we have or appropriate action to get them to improve it?
I, I would say this, that the special permit is granted based upon what the commission's been presented to it and what the applicant accepts. If the special permit is not met, and the requirements of the special permit are not met, you can revisit that at some point in the future. The reason that I said three years is I think that's kind of a middle time between immediately and five years, which they have under the statutes to complete these things. What I would see is if the commission decided to approve it, that the pool barn as well, and I hate to keep calling it the pool barn, but you all know the barn that I'm talking about, could be renovated on the outside. That doesn't necessarily mean that every single tenant will be fit out on the inside, because I, I don't know when that's going to happen or how that's going to happen. But there's a retail space, obviously, that's there. There's a live-work space and so on. So my suggestion was that three years is a reasonable period of time. I have no reason to believe, and I haven't discussed this with the applicant, I have no reason to believe that they would argue with that based upon the representations that have been made to me, is that they're willing to proceed with that. But I also think that it gives the commission a certain amount of protection that you can look back after that period of time and say, hey, things are not moving forward. What's going on?
They'll close the gas station if they don't do it.
You know, I don't know the answer to that, Ned. I, I would think that would be hard, but I would also think the violation of...
Close fines, though?
I think the violation of the requirements of the special permit would make it pretty tough for them to continue without doing what they're supposed to do. So I honestly couldn't give you an answer to that. That's really a question for the town attorney.
We should give Mr. Evans credit for the work he's done across the street too, though.
No doubt.
Yeah, noted.
Is Cumberland Farms have an ownership interest in the pool barn?
No, they're lessee, correct? They're lessee.
Yeah, well, they're going to build their own, right? And you're, you're ground lease, basically.
I think the applicant made some comments during the hearing a couple of times that, that he would continue to be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the property.
Any other comments, Ned? You're welcome to make comments as alternates. I know, Mike, you were here for hearings.
Well, I... Actually, I have one final comment. I'm sorry, I didn't want to try to wrap this up. I, I said in the last meeting, this is a difficult decision for me to make, and it hasn't gotten any easier, I don't think. But I think is going to be, for me personally, the tiebreaker is going to be, I'm also a commercial property owner in this town. I own several properties in town. And I'm trying to put myself in his shoes. If someone told me, I bought this property, try and do something nice with something that his property has sat there for a long time, looking the way it does, can't believe you folks want to sit there and look at it the way it is for a longer period of time. I don't know, I don't want to penalize him for trying to do something nice to that property. He owns the property? He bought it? Should be able to do something with it.
That's... Oh, excuse me, timeout, timeout. Pardon me, pardon me, you're out of order. It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing, guys.
It's not a public hearing. I'm sorry to have to do...
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm sorry. We've, we've, trying to keep, we've had our chance.
I'm entitled to my opinion, as you are.
This is the commission's...
Right.
Let me just take a quick timeout. Everybody should know that, that this is the way the zoning commission works in this town. We don't have any discussions about this other than out here in the open, in front of everyone. And so you have to let us speak and have this kind of dialogue. And when we're done, we will vote. And, and that's the, that's the process. We had extensive period of times to listen to everybody else. So I didn't mean to recommend you, but we do need order and civility. All right?
So I've been here for 50 years, and I don't remember anything nice being on that property, really. So that's my last comment.
I'd like to move that we accept the PAD application with the 10 stipulations as listed here.
And I will second the motion, and then I get to sum up. This is the chairman's prerogative. But I appreciate everyone's comments, and I will echo what I said when we last met in July, that this, this, this has issues on both sides that are, require you to think very long and hard about it. I'm glad... And I'm glad we actually had the time to do this and think about it. And we do take very seriously everything said by neighbors and surrounding people. It weighs heavy on us when we have that much public interest. But I also fall into the category of having, as a commission and as a zoning chair, the need to do what's right for the town and for the property owner. And property owners have rights. They do make investments in property, and they have the right to develop. And the only thing stopping Mr. Evans from doing that is the requirement that the zoning commission approve this change for him. And so I have to look at it in light of, is this overall the best thing for the town? Is it fair to the owner? And take into consideration the other people that are impacted by all this. Whenever you have this kind of difficult decision to make, someone's going to walk out of the meeting unhappy. That's, that's almost obvious. But I ended up coming down in the same place, that I think, to the extent we can, we should put restrictions on the application to best react to the, the feedback we got from the community. But that I would vote in favor of the project, because I think, long-term, it's better for the town to have that property renovated and productively in use. It's not a dramatic change from the way it was zoned originally. Industrial zone to retail gasoline is not a big stretch for me. May not be what you want to cross from your, your house, but the potential is there all along. So I'm seconding the motion and suggesting that with these restrictions as outlined in Hiram's letter, and we'll be glad to provide that, it will be in the record. Recommend approval. All right, anybody else? So we'll ask for a vote. Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jerry and Derek, four to two. So it passes?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a couple of other items of business. St. Mary's Church discussion and possible decision regarding final plan for existing temporary buildings. And church on the properties located at 940 Hop Meadow Street and 944. What?
946.
And 946.
I don't have a business card. Bill Hayden.
And I never envisioned-
Business manager. N-G-I-B-E-N.
It's just a sinner in these.
Business manager.
We're going to have people that weren't supposed to be showing up to us.
Rick Lenz.
Yeah, there's too many sessions.
No, it's fine, just wanted to make sure you knew that it matters.
I appreciate it.
Not saying something is always okay.
That's fine.
All right, gentlemen? Sorry.
Good evening. For those of you who weren't here the last time I was here, I'm Bill Hayden. I'm the, the business manager for St. Mary's Parish. Brought with me, Rick Lenz, who is the chair of the finance committee, trustee of the parish, as well as the co-chair of the facilities working group. And quickly, for those that aren't familiar, we, as a result of the Newtown shootings, the school and parish commissioned a security review. Security review recommended that school activities that we have in the lower church, adjacent to the school, be removed from the lower church and moved to the, to the school proper. One of the consequences of that, that move, which we, we did do, meant that we had to remove a library and some art space from the, from the school proper, which was subsequently solved with, on a temporary basis, with temporary modular units. Commission has, has made it clear that those temporary units need to be temporary to the tune of three years. And so primarily, what I wanted to do today is to, is to give you an update as to where we are in our facilities master planning process, and to give that assurance that, that we're still on, on pace to have those be actually temporary units. The, so the last, since, since your last year, I guess the one other thing I wanted to, to highlight is that our process is, is slightly more complicated than, than some processes, inasmuch as we're trying to not only manage the best interests of the town, the town, the town center community. We have parishioners that we obviously have to answer to. And very uniquely, we also have an archbishop that we have to, we have to answer to.
New Archbishop.
And, and, well, and the critical component to that in this particular case is, it's a new archbishop. And that new archbishop has instituted something called the pastoral planning process. And I'd like to tell you more about that, but I don't know any more about it than he's going to do a pastoral planning process. What that means is that, that the timelines that, that we were typically used to with the previous archbishop are, are a little bit strained. So we're, we continue to be pushing to make sure that we can, we can move forward with our plans as best we can, but we are constrained by, by what the chancery has to, has to tell us and sign off. So we were very, as an example, we're very specifically constrained as to what we can say publicly, because it would go then to parishioners, or obviously have parishioners have access to it, without his prior sign-off. All that having been said, we continue, the, the facility working group that, that Rick has chaired, or co-chaired for the last 12 months has met, better than 30 times, probably better than 40 times, if you include the subcommittee this, this summer. And we've done a full inventory of, of assets, meaning physical plant, the, the various buildings, and physical assets on the plant, as well as, as an inventory of stakeholders and, and their interests. We have, that, that process led us to a variety of scenarios. The portable, the portable units, the temporary units in themselves are, are a driving force to, in the process, but it, but it's a sub-force to the, to the master, master plan. One of the things that's very evident from our master planning process is that we are very, very short on both meeting facilities, meeting space on, there's a, there's a significant amount of demand for, for space. And speaking as a person who's usually trying to arm wrestle people out of one space and into a slightly different space, I can tell you that it's a constant battle to get enough space. We don't have enough storage for the, for the facilities that we have, is another significant issue. We have a concern as a, as a community about connectivity. We have a church, we have a church community, we have a school community, we have the, the town community. Trying to, trying to integrate those, those communities into, into a, an effective, happy community is, is a challenge. So connectivity is one of the things that we're, we're really very concerned about in the process. So specifically, as it relates to the temporary units, and I'll pass this around for, you know, I didn't have a big copy, but pass this through. There are, if you're familiar with the property, the temporary units sit at the northeast corner. So if you're looking at the, the frontage, farthest to the, to the Iron Horse side, to the, to the north of the property. Coming, if you're sitting at the light at the bottom of Seminary Road, you can see the, see the temporary units, but you can't see them from a whole lot of other angles. We have, we've identified, as it relates to the temporary units, five potential, five potential possibilities, five possibilities. I guess potential and possibilities is redundant, right? The, the first is to where the temporary units are, do some, some amount of construction, permanent construction that, that solves that, solves that space issue. And again, the school's minimum needs are to get, have a library, art, and music space for certification. So we need to make sure we find a way to, to solve those problems.
Can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but-
Sure.
Is there a certain amount of square footage you've decided needs, is needed for those things?
Well-
Based on student population and-
We don't, I, I will, you sort of-
Okay.
Cut to, cut to the, to the end for me, but there's, we're, we're closing in on what that number is.
Okay.
There's some, there's some guidelines, both from, you know, sort of school sources and, and, you know, safety code, et cetera. So we could potentially add to the, to the northeast where those temporary units are. Potentially, we could add to the front, to the, to the, to the west side, on the, right on the Hop Meadow side, right at the front of the, the parish, what's called the parish center. There's room between the setback, and, and that would bring the, the property out to the, to the sidewalk a little bit more. It's a possibility of adding where the administration and the, and the main entrance to the school is, to the school building, would bring the administrative offices removed to that general location, the school building, to begin with. And so we would be pushing that out a little bit more, and making space inside for those. The other two alternatives are to incorporate the, the space needs of the school that are dealt with by the temporary classrooms into a larger construction project that addresses all the needs of the parish as well, some of the space and, and storage and connectivity concerns that we would have. So there's a possibility that, that those, that those, that that construction might be incorporated into a, a larger construction project. And then the final possibility is, if we are not able to move, move forward, what I describe as retrenchment, we will, there's, there's safety concerns, but we would, we would move the space back to the, to the lower church. It heightens some of the space concerns that the church has, but if we don't have, if we can't, if we can't jump through the necessary, or jump over the necessary hurdles to get there, we would, we would remove those, those units and retrench and use the, the space as we had previously. We are, I want to emphasize how committed we are to moving this process forward. Over the course of the summer, Rick has, has, has traveled back and forth from, from, from Massachusetts to make sure that he was here for, for a whole series of meetings. And we have submitted, we have put out RFPs and conducted interviews, and actually have selected both construction manager and a design team, and have committed about $30,000 to what, what I describe as layman, as a, as a site analysis. So we'll do feasibility, the, the architectural feasibility study on, on principally what, on a larger construction project that meets, meets all the needs of the parish. Now, what that design is at this moment, we don't, we don't have that design. And we can't, the BBE out of Bloomfield would be the construction manager, and Moser Nielsen Pylon out of Weathersfield would be the design team. We're, we haven't been able to get going with them yet, because they're still waiting on final approvals from the, from the archdiocese to, to actually be able to hire those folks. Once we hire those folks, we'll have a whole lot more information about what's possible. We expect that hiring to happen officially. The contracts are being reviewed now. Expect that hiring to happen soon. Weeks is what we're hoping, but, but best I can say is, with accuracy, is soon. And once, once we've done that, we do have one other criteria, and that would be a financial feasibility study, because the, the construction that we would do, any construction that we would do, we'd probably be raising 90-plus percent of that from parishioners. The church doesn't have, have a fund for, for capital improvements of, of any substance. We can do maintenance, but, but capital improvements, we don't. So we'd be raising that. So once we'd get the architectural feasibility, then we'd have to do the financial feasibility. Presented as go-no-go as we're going along, if, if the larger project wouldn't happen, is, is not feasible, then we would be, we'd be back at looking at one of these other alternatives for the, for the space. And, and then the financial feasibility for that. I would comment that this is specifically around the school's use, need for the temporary If we had one of those other alternatives that's, that circled there, we'd probably have to do something else for improvement to the church as well, to try and meet some of those needs, that multi-use needs, that, that would represent themselves more dramatically, meeting space.
Can you refresh me again?
Yep.
You may have even mentioned it before, where the space is currently?
So-
The, the library, art space, well, no, I mean-
Right now, it's-
But if you had to retrench, I guess, where is that space?
That space would be in the basement of the church.
In the basement of the church. And in the case of retrenchment, would there be, there would be money spent on improving the safety? I mean, that's what this is all about, right? The safe, a, a safety initiative?
Well, it started with a safety initiative, and it, and it, and it presented to us, us a series of, we also had a parish strategic planning retreat. And one of the things that kept highlighting in that, in that process was the need for more and better space, handicap accessible.
So it created a dialogue for something much bigger.
Exactly, right.
So in, have there been any discussions about, just visually for us, what a preference would be, A, B, or C?
Yes, a significant amount. And, and really, I, there's a, there's a D out there that I think may be the ultimate, because in looking at the connectivity, if you imagine C extending out-
A D different than incorporate into-
Yeah, yeah, it would be, I guess, I guess, yeah, F, I guess. It would, if you imagine the, the, where C is, extend that out closer to the, closer to the church, further.
Keyword connectivity, I get it.
Right, get that connectivity, but-
Dog won't hunt.
Yeah, well, I mean, again, you know, we're, we're hemmed in by, we're hemmed in by process, but we're, we are, I can tell you that I've worked with, you know, multiple volunteer groups, this, the volunteer group, this facility working committee has worked harder than I've ever seen a volunteer group work before.
So just, I'm going to interrupt for a second and say, when we, you know, the, the things showed up, we had an emergency meeting, we got them approved, we put a sort of sunset or a come-back-and-talk-to-us, and I think this was the come-back-and-talk-to-us about how you're doing, but what was the outside date that we wanted the temporary ones gone? Or did we, did we do that? I can't remember. We talked around it.
I think that, Mr. Chairman, I think that initially the commission wanted to have them come back within four months, and I think between their working through this process and the other commission's other activities, that's how we've come to it this point in time. So that's, we, I don't think we ever said it.
No, there, there's a, I'm pretty sure, yes, 36 months or-
I thought we had it out there.
It's pretty, it's pretty tight.
You mentioned when Ethel Walker had to build a temporary facility because too many kids brought their horses to school the night year. We built a temporary barn for three years, that I think lasted 12.
Well, that was the concern we had, was that-
Yes.
And by the way, they look a lot better than I feared they'd look like. They actually, once installed, they looked more like that.
We worked very hard to make, to do that, yeah.
But nonetheless, we are, we want to continue to encourage a plan, because, you know, the temporary buildings don't really belong there permanently, so.
Right, and I want to make sure, you know, we're, we're committed to that, and we can come back whenever you want us to. I would say, I would, I would suggest that I keep, Hiram posted as to what, when I have something to actually be able to show you, that, that, you know, based on the work, I can, I can, you know, let you know when, you know, when we've gotten those approvals for the design team and, and how that's progressing. Yep.
As it pertains to the bishop, Archbishop's new plan that nobody knows about, doesn't that make you want to get this in place before, so that, you know, it's, it's grandfathered and too late?
Yeah, well, I mean, we are the, it is, it is too late. We're, we're, we are, as far as we can tell, we are the first, and we've talked, I talked to some folks at the chancery, we are the first parish that's sort of raised its hands and said, we want to do something. Now, we have, we have a couple of things going in our favor. One, Simsbury and St. Mary's is, it's an affluent parish. It, it doesn't have financial concerns.
The school is thriving.
The school is, is one of the most successful Catholic schools in the, in the, in the Farmington Valley. So it's, we have a lot of things going. We, we wouldn't expect, I mean, the kinds of things that would come out of a planning is, you know, you're going to link, or you're going to close, or those kinds of things. We don't anticipate having any of those kind of challenges. But I think what we are is, we're the guinea pig for this process.
Case study.
Yeah. And so what we're, what we're hoping to do is, is to be able to show them that this is the way to do it, and if anybody else wants to do it, they need to follow- it, and if anybody else wants to do it, they need to follow our lead. That's what we're going.
So I would say from us, what do you need? You're reporting, we're saying, we encourage you to keep on as tight a timeline as you can. You know, we understand that you want to do this comprehensively and correctly, and so that it might take longer than even when you originally thought. But we always thought it would take longer than you originally thought.
Yeah.
I'm with that. These things, they take a long time. But as soon as you start to have, you know, an idea of which direction you're gonna go, then we'll put it through DRB and all of the other drills necessary to do that. Our goal here is to be sure that, one, the kids are always safe, that's in parish, parishioners as well, that there is some sense of urgency to not think that the problem's solved. And I think you guys clearly, by coming tonight, have demonstrated that you don't believe that, and that's good. And then we'll work with you from there. So on something that'll be aesthetically and financially right for you guys and fit the town center code.
My sense is, once we get the architect and the construction in place, it's gonna take at least a couple of months for them to give us the information we need to know whether we're gonna be able to push it out.
So why don't we push this out six months? It's September. I think if you came to see us in the spring and gave us another progress report, we would hope that there'd be some progress.
Yeah.
And that'd be fine. Anybody else have a...
As the chairman of the committee that built the addition to the school, it's gonna take a long time. Thank you for the...
Thank you for your optimism and your encouragement.
I'll tell you, we're jamming our parking lot at St. Catharines through pretty quick, I gotta say. That was under the radar, I think that's pre...
No, no, we approved that.
No, I'm saying, we did, I'm saying, it got in and it's, it's gonna be done in the next week or so.
Oh, before the Archdiocese. Yeah. There's no rational building involved.
Right, true. It is a little different project.
All right, so just, yeah, appreciate the information, keep us posted. Then all you do is raise the money for us.
Yeah, that's the easy part, right?
Yeah, the next time we come, we'll be making an ask for you two.
Yeah. I got it. Thank you. Both Ethel Walker, they look like they're on the road, right?
They just sold a whole bunch of, like, Simsbury taxpayers are paying for that.
They also got a huge donation.
We did a, we did a whole bunch of research on other projects that were being done and talked to one parish. And the interviewee said it was a great project. We recommend the design team and the construction managers. Can I talk to the business manager that was involved? I'm sorry, he passed away.
I'm a passerelle.
He passed away. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. All right, so that was, anything else for the good of the order?
Discussion of new and ongoing projects.
Sure, just very quick, our newest addition to our staff is Rachel Blatt. Rachel is the new Assistant Town Planner, and I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew her face and...
Welcome, get to work.
We're doing a break in here. One of the things that she is working on, actually, we had talked about that report on our apartments and the percentage of apartments and so on, we're just gonna have additional work based on our initial draft report. If you, any of you have any specific questions or concerns or whatever, and I know lots of them, but, you know, forward them to me again to make sure that that report that we end up with, it addresses those concerns. She's done a lot of research recently with information that MIT has generated, Harvard has generated, lots of other local activity, local Connecticut organizations have generated Partnership Strong Communities and a number of others. But if there are specific questions that you have that are either bothering you or you want to see this report addressed, please let us know what they are so we can make sure that they're covered, so we unveil this thing and then have everybody say, oh, you didn't do what we said, you know, we'd like to make it complete. So I would say probably by your next meeting, we should be ready to give it to you. So it's pretty much done.
In the back of my mind, there was something that said Big Y in September.
Break ground. That was, there was, there was an article, or it was, I read it somewhere.
Yeah, that's my...
It was in the paper. It was in the newspaper.
Yes.
I hope we're not having the same discussion in October because my understanding is that
they still said, their construction super said that he would be coming here in September. So I'm hoping that he's not just gonna camp out there. So I'm still hopeful that September's a month.
Gonna put a temporary building on the property in there.
There is lots of discussion going on about the barns that are on the property and the historical societies involved in those. I'm not sure if I mentioned those to you or not, but...
I'd just like to see the buildings there torn down to tell me that there's at least some...
Just put a shovel in the ground.
Yeah, just put some solar panels on those things. Solarize Simsbury. I mean, if you're gonna do it.
That's what we should do on the, we should do it on the pool bar. That roof is huge.
We've talked about it. Talked about it. Talked about it.
All right, all right. We're done with that.
Sorry.
Any other things that are pending? Like I said, please send our question, send your questions in. Will Rachel and I talk about it?
I'll echo what Hiram was subtle in sending the 34 Hot Meadow Street package, which is 24 megs, I think.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yeah.
And so when you have two or three long Sunday afternoons, you can start doing, but we're gonna, that will be on our plate in...
October 6th.
October 6th. So not next meeting, but the one after. They did present at DRB today. I came in late, Dave saw it. And this really is actually apropos to the work that Rachel is working on because there are, lo and behold, apartments as part of this application, and that's what we've been doing. So, you know, we need to understand, not just from the developer's perspective of how strong the need is, but from our own analysis. And there is good evidence, as I've seen the draft of the report that Hiram's working on that supports what all of these are, and we have to remember not all of these are gonna be built. But... I will, I'll just make a comment. As I work over a mill pond, I don't see any demand for the condos at all.
Not the ones that are for sale, right? Yeah, they're empty.
The apartments look great, they're doing great, but there's a lot of staging equipment still up there, and I don't know if they've switched gears and don't have the workers to complain, but, I mean, there have been open houses on those first two or three units for months.
That the ones on the water?
Yeah.
What's the price?
Are the apartments filled up?
It's four...
The apartments are doing great.
They're 100%.
Are they 100%?
Yes.
You know, it's one of the really sort of fascinating questions is, and we all know that what we'd like to generate is some additional retail and commercial activity. There's no question about that. You know, just how we get that in the right place, in the right size, in the right context and everything. There, let me just be really subtle about this.
Move the Forling Road to town.
Oh, gee, don't say that.
He was joking for the record, just because we're still recording this.
Don't listen to him.
There are just some real hard decisions that are gonna come up in the near future for this commission, and I think we need to figure out where do we need this stuff and where don't we need this stuff? And that's really...
Downtown.
Let me ask a question about the Webster Bank Building.
Bless you.
Now, the joint presentation they made, we sort of sent them back, said it was too big, but have you heard back from them?
I have. They've contacted me, they have gone back to their architect, and they're coming back. They would like to come back October 6th to talk to DRB as well, and perhaps we should have a joint session.
We should do that.
Because I thought that last one was very helpful.
We didn't, we didn't have Ethel Walker do their joint thing today. We probably could have. It didn't, you didn't, it's non-controversial, I have to say.
It's non-controversial, it's a nonprofit institution.
You'll like this.
I give everybody the opportunity to go to Economic Development Commission as well. Some of them choose to, some of them choose not to, so, but anyway.
Let's just always keep that in mind, though. I mean, it's just, I realized it too late to get down here in time to see it, but...
We'll let everybody know if they...
Hopefully we can do something. Hopefully the Webster Bank thing moves...
Well, I was just gonna say that the property is starting to look really, really shabby, and I'll say this on the record with the mic on, that I hope to God it's not a tactic to say that, you know, the property's deteriorating, therefore you need to be more lenient with me. I think this, I'll speak for myself, the commission is much more saying, bring something quality to town, and you represent that kind of project by taking care of the property while we work through it. We gave them very constructive ideas of how to make that work.
They weren't that far off, I didn't think.
No, they weren't, they weren't. We liked the first thing first, and it wasn't economic. They came back with something that was economic that we didn't like, so somewhere in between, there ought to be something that we can work. And I've also shared, while I'm on a little bit of a soapbox here with Hiram, that, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. I think we approved the PAD at Firetown and Plank Hill Road, and every time I see Jim Gallagher, I have to duck because the construction there is just not clean and neat, it looks ugly, it looks dangerous to me.
Looks like they should tear it down. That's what it looks like at this point.
It looks, yeah.
Tear the sign down.
Take the whole sign down. He didn't take just a part of the sign down.
The leggings are in.
Footings are in, yes, I saw that.
After the chairman and I spoke about this this morning, I called him, and he actually called me back twice today. He's very anxious to comply. What happened was, and it's not an acceptable excuse, don't get me wrong, is that he had a large subdivision in Avon that was approved, and he struggled to get through that, and it's approved, and so that's where he's been working. He did call me back twice today and assured me that he will get on that very promptly, so...
He's gonna ask, I mean, he actually advertised those in the paper online, and he's asking a pretty price for those, so if he has any help with selling them, he better make the construction look better than it does.
People will remember that.
Yeah, they do.
I'll convey that both to him and also to the folks at the Webster Bank.
That's enough, that's enough on that.
Has there been any movement on the...
Discussion.
...in Time Bickford, the potential factory to grow plants?
As far as we know, they cure leaf.
Yes, it's in operation.
Yeah, it's up and running.
Security's up.
Fence is up.
Everything's up. You can't go up that driveway.
It will be as inconspicuous as it currently is, will remain that way.
All right, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does anybody ever oppose that?
Want to stay here and talk some more?